Good morning. I would like to welcome you to the regular workshop meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM, Monday, April 5th, 2010. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
Salute, Madam Chairman.
We have a motion by Mr. Bazler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stame. Y'all in favor? Motion carries five zero. The first item this morning is going to be a census update, and I'd like to ask if, Michael, would you or would Julie like to give us a little update on how the census is going? Please.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you. Today, we've had numerous outreach efforts concerning the census, and in checking the website this morning, Henry County currently stands at 55 percent participation rate, male participation rate, which fares favorably. Right now, the current national average is 56 percent. And even tracking, I went back through and checked some of the adjoining counties within our area. Newton County's at 53 percent. Butts is also at 55. Rockdale's at 50. Fayette County's at 62. Cobb at 51. Cherokee 57. Clayton at 44. Spalding at 56. And DeKalb at 48. So, we're kind of middle of the road for the most part, and again, the national average currently is at 56. To date, we've done numerous outreach efforts, including spring festivals. We participated with the egg hunt at Nash Farms. We've spoken at churches and you've gone to KMSI outreach efforts. Julie and her department with Communications has been tremendous in helping out, getting the word out through our television station, numerous interviews. It's on our website. And we've also worked closely with our media, with our local media, with the newspapers. They've done a good job as far as getting information out as well. One thing we've discovered over the course of the last week or so, there were, we've run into areas where there's been pockets of locations throughout the county that did not receive their forms. In one case, I've heard of one subdivision up on the northern side that did not receive their form. What we're, so where our push right now has been to go out and let people know that there are locations where individuals can go and pick up their forms. Every city hall, certainly here at the county administration building, and every one of our libraries, they have forms there available. If you have not received your form, they can go receive and pick up their form. And areas like county administration building here, we have someone here that's going to be actually manning, manning a desk where they have any questions needing assistance, they can come in and get assistance as well. And those locations, questionnaire assistance centers are also located throughout the county. If they have any questions, they can certainly come and contact the county, go on our website, and there's also some national phone numbers you can call to get assistance as well. We have one more big effort that we're conducting this Saturday. It's a march to the mailbox. We'll be focusing on two areas, two hard to count areas. One located in Stockbridge, one located in McDonough. We'll be going out handing out T-shirts and flyers and the like, just to make sure to get people out and get our participation rate up again. In 2000, Henry County was at 72 percent, and yes, our goal was looking for, try to get to 80 percent. So again, right now, we're tracking fairly well, but there's still some efforts we need to continue to move forward with.
Now, it's safe to say if a citizen has not already received their census form in the mail, then they need to pick one up and fill it out. It's probably not going to come to their mailbox.
That's what we're encouraging them. We, in speaking with the post office on Friday, they did say that they had sent out an additional, additional wave of, a larger volume of new forms. However, I spoke, I called some people this morning who I knew had not received them, and they still had not received them. So, we are asking, in fact, we've posted, our communications department put a poster together, and we're going to post those in the post office, letting people know, if you have not received your forms, please come to one of the questionnaire assistance centers, list the addresses and the locations of where those assistance centers are located.
It's also my understanding that if citizens received their mail via a post office box, then they would not have received a form either.
And that's correct. That's also correct. And that's why we've kind of focused our, a lot of our attention on, at the post office, one in Stockbridge and here, and one in McDonough as well, to make sure that people know that if you, if you currently receive your mail at the post office, as you've stated, then you would not have received the form. So, what you would do in that case is you'd come to one of the questionnaire assistance centers or B-counted sites and pick up a form, that location, this exact same form, and once you send it back in with your new address, they'll give it a, track your data.
Thank you for that update. We appreciate that.
You're welcome.
And just as a means of encouragement to citizens, mailing your census form in is very inexpensive. If you do not mail your form in, someone will come to your door, and it costs an average of $56 per household for someone to knock on your door and obtain that information. So, we're asking that you please take time to fill out those forms and drop them back in the mail. At the end of the day, you're saving yourself money as taxpayers. Very important too. $400 billion in federal money will be distributed based on those census numbers, so it can be extremely important to our community as we move forward. The next item on the agenda is under SPOST. The first item is an update on SPOST and non-SPOST capital projects. Our presenter is Mr. Ron Burkhalter, SPOST Capital Projects Director. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. The update on the SPOST capital projects by district, District 1, the Haven House, it's a $2 million budget for a 14,500 square foot facility. Design has been complete. The permitting has been completed with the county, and currently, we're in permitting with the city. Within two weeks, we'll be getting that project out to bid. The 911 Emergency Operations Center, $1.4 million budget for a 222,000 square foot 911 and emergency operations facility, which is renovation of the RV center that the county purchased. This week, we're in discussions with the last architect. We've received several proposals from architects on the job, and by the end of this week, we'll have an architect selected. The Locust Grove Rec Center, we're going to replace the flooring in the gymnasium with a sports athletic flooring, with a walking track downstairs, putting in a walking track upstairs in the mezzanine area, and also a workout area. The senior center, which is converting of the community center into a senior center. We have the preliminary conversion plans there in progress. We're going to have a couple of more meetings this week to finalize out the final design. Our transit building, which is going to sit in front of the E-911 Center off of Industrial Boulevard. David Williamson has all the information as far as the design on the building and the site work that's going to be required for that building for his grant application. At the Parks in District 1, Sandy Ridge and Holder Park, met with Parks and Rec last week. There's storage buildings that we want to build. We'll be getting the design on those within the next couple of weeks and getting athletic storage buildings built. And also, some steps in the sidewalk that we're going to put in for the football fields at the Holder Park. At Windy Hill Park, we have the RC Track Pavilion, which is a 20-by-40 pavilion that's 12 feet elevated up in the air for the RC Track. The design is complete. We have stamped drawings from the city and from the county. Right now, we're in the process of procuring the materials.
Before you move on to District 2, Mr. Holder, did you have any questions or comments about any of those items located in your district?
I'd just like to make a comment that even though most, several of these projects are located in the district, they're actually not District 1 projects, just like the Haven House and 911 Operations Center and the Transit Building. Those are actually countywide facilities that happen to be located in District 1. I'm certainly proud to see us moving forward, though, on all of these projects, obviously. Makes no difference where they're located, that we are moving, moving forward.
Okay. District 2, and hopefully I have these right, the Fortson Library, that's the new 16,000 square foot library in the city of Hampton. Construction is now 95 percent complete. The finishes on the inside of the building, the floor coverings, the painting and the asphalt paving has to go down in the parking lots. Landscaping is already in progress, and the completion on that is the second week of May. We will, we're also in the progress of procuring all the furnishings and the equipment that goes in the building, and we've had several meetings with the library, coordinate with them, the moving from the old library into the new facility. North Mount Carmel Soccer Complex, that's the 10 new soccer fields out at the North Mount Carmel Park. It's currently under construction. All the clearing has been done. The topsoil's been stripped. There are mass grading in the site. The pavilion has been staked. Within two weeks, the pavilion or the concession stand will be started on, and also storm drainage is going in. Out at the North Forty Park, a couple of more smaller park improvements that we're doing out there, some painting and some tile, and within the next three to four weeks, all that should be complete. And again, that's coordinating that through Parks and Rec.
Did you hear any comments about your district items?
I have one. Now, Tanya, what's the update on the land for the senior citizen building?
As you know, we have been embroiled in a lengthy discussion with the FDIC who took over that property. We are now at a stage where we are close to getting the senior center property free and clear of any and all liens, so that the county can begin its construction project in that regard. The progress was stalled due to the fact that the bank that held the original mortgage was seized by the FDIC, and in dealing with the many layers of bureaucracy with the federal agency, we've had a time in getting it to the point where we are now. So, I'm pleased to say that we're as close as we have been in the past year in getting all this resolved. Commissioner Jeffries, I spoke to the mayor and the city manager of Hampton a week or so ago, and we are all in agreement that we're going to work together with the new bank owner to attempt to get this property free and clear of any liens. We're currently in litigation, but even the attorney who represents the new bank owner, holder of the property, wants to get the property resolved, wants to get this issue resolved. There's an issue with SOAR being one to the adjacent property where the subdivision's going to be located. They want to get that issue resolved to their satisfaction before they release the liens, and with the help of the city manager of Hampton, we hope to get that done within the next week or so. So, I hope to have something more positive to report to the board within the near future.
District 3, the parking deck at the Courthouse, which is the two-level parking deck, it's got 300 parking spaces. All of the infrastructure work on Lawrenceville Street has been complete. The storm drain contractor's now on-site. Site has been cleared, graded. Friday, he started pouring his foundations or footings for the parking deck. The entire parking deck is a pre-cast structure. All of the pre-cast elements have already been cast. They're stored in Tendall's Yard up in Conley. We made a site visit up there to inspect the panels, to make sure that, once they get on-site, there shouldn't be any issues with them. The contractor's going to need 10 days to physically erect that parking deck, exclusive of the bottom slab, and there's a three-inch topping slab that goes on the upper, upper Transit Lube Shop, last week, had the first meeting on the grant money that Transit has received for the lube shop. We're in progress right now of getting building designs of a metal-type building, okay, that we're going to use for that, and that is just, that's just now started. Over at Heritage Park, I'll be coming before the Board of Commissioners on the 19th meeting on the LED monument sign that we sent out for bids. Interesting thing, we received, on the sign, we received 23 bids or proposals on that particular sign, so I'll be coming before the Board with the resolution at the next meeting, wanting to award that sign. We're also going to build a storage facility, working with Parks and Rec over near the arena.
Mr. Stame, any questions or comments?
Where's the Transit Lube Center going to be built?
It'll be adjacent to, right on the other side of the road of Fleet Services. As you go up in Fleet, it'll be on the left, it'll be on the right-hand side.
On the DOT lot right here, right? You got that underneath District 3, doesn't make any difference, but I think that actually sits in District 1. And I think we, I was with you the other day when we selected the sign, so I don't have any more questions.
District 4, Fire Station Number 9, which is a replacement station on Rock Quarry Road. Architect has already been selected. The design is in progress, and we'll have that out to bid the first or the second week in July. At Mosley Park, just a note on here, that the concessions and the pavilions at the park, those have all been complete.
Yes, yes, we do. Ron, the other thing, too, would be the, we have a budget of $500,000 involved in the police precinct at Stockbridge. Need to make a note of that, and in doing so, if you don't mind, maybe get, if, when you get an opportunity, if you would have a conversation with Chief Nichols in reference to that, and just to make sure that there's still, everything is on the plans. I've never seen the revised plan. Just want to make sure that the police department's getting what they want, because it's a joint effort between us and the city of Stockbridge on that particular project. And also, on the Mosley Park thing, we've got a, we've got a couple of other things that we're going to do, but those, like you say, the pavilions and the concession stand and the pavilions are complete. Just want to make sure that we stay on top of that police precinct. That's, the only thing we're doing there is we're, we're, we're joint venturing, basically, with the city, and we're bringing a half a million dollars to the table on that particular renovation project, so. And I probably hadn't had an opportunity to speak with you about that, but if you would get it, when you get an opportunity, if you would get with Keith Nichols and, you know, the guys over at the police department, and let's just make sure that they're getting what they, what they're looking for.
Okay, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. District 5, the Fairview Rec Center, which is the two basket, the rec center with two basketball courts, exercise, walking track, meeting rooms, classrooms, and offices, which is similar to the Mosley Park. It's current, it's a, that project is a design build with the company MWC out of Carrollton. Construction is under, in progress, mass grading, storm drainage is currently going on with his detention pond, and last week, he was working on his grading or his pad, okay, for the building itself.
Mr. Bazler, questions or comments?
I have nothing, Madam Chairman.
Mr. Burkhalter, I have one request. It's my understanding that the company that is building the Fairview Rec Center also constructed a center out in Douglas County that was a joint senior center slash recreation center. Had a conversation with them after this bid came in. Mr. Jeffries and I, as well as the mayor of Hampton and a couple of others, would like to go out and look at the facility in Douglas County, in Douglasville, to potentially use that as an example of the type of center to be built in the Hampton area. So, if you could make contact with them and get some specifics, I would appreciate it. I know Mr. Jeffries would as well.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item under SPOST is an update on SPOST Transportation Projects. Our presenter is Rocky Ramirez, SPOST Transportation Director. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and Board Members. Let's see. There we go. Let's see. No. Let's see. Got a little presentation here, see if it kicks in. There we go. The first thing I want to talk about is what SPOST accomplished in the year 2009. SPOST Transportation completed five projects in 2009 with a total amount of $4,428,162.5 in addition to these five projects. We also completed, oh, we were in construction with all another eight projects, so in addition to those five, we had eight under construction. Also, currently, we are acquiring roadway on eight projects. The projects are Race Track at 81. That project is, we're only buying the roadway. It's a Georgia DOT project that they're going to bid out. Same thing with Harris Drive and State Route 42. We're buying the roadway, and it's a Georgia DOT project to lay it. We're acquiring roadway on South Bethany Road from Cohen Road to Philadelphia, Mackey Road, Starsworth Road, Oakland Road, Fairview Road at State Route 155, East Atlanta Road at Panola Road. The last one, we have completed all the parcels except one, and we should be putting it out for bid in April this month. Those, East Atlanta, Panola, sir. Currently in design, we have six projects. We've got Campground Road Extension, Rock Quarry Road Bridge over the railroad tracks, Fairview Road, Ambe Block Road Widening, East Atlanta Road at Thurman, Hemp Hill Road at 138, and Old Highway 3 at State Route 81. Currently under construction, we have 15 projects with a total cost of construction of $46,871,812.59. This does not include the latest project that we bid out last month, which was Rocky Creek at Hampton Locust Grove Road, and that came around $1.7 million. Now, I would like to talk, give a little brief description, update of those 15 projects. The first picture you see here is the Eagle's Landing Project. Here, you can see where the construction of the bridge, the new bridge on Pace Creek, is going on. You can see the foundation, the piles, and that's the part of the substructure that's going to hold the bridge. Another view, where clearing, all the clearing's been completed on Eagle's Landing. Another view here, you can see where the grading has started, and also the installation of drainage pipes have also been commenced. This is East Lake Road, the extension Phase 2, that's going to tie it from Springdale to 155. Here, you can see the area that has been, been wet for over six months. You can see where the contractor has moved the dirt around, and he's been doing this on and off, and every time he does it, it rains, so we've been having rain for every, every three days. So, finally, we had good, good weather last, last week or so, so a lot of progress has been happening over there. There's another view, the area where you see the GAB and the curb and gutter. We just did that in the last two weeks. Here's the intersection of 155 at East Lake. All the widening has been completed. Curb and gutter is completed, and sidewalk are being installed right now. This section of East Lake was paved back in October. We have the base and binder from Springdale all the way to English Road. Here's the signal, the new signal that is going to be in operation on Springdale at East Lake, once, once we complete the project. Hudson Bridge, we started Hudson Bridge. You can see where the grading, clearing is completed, grading is ongoing, and on your far right, you can see the pipes, that we've been installing pipes out there, starting last week. This one is McDonough Parkway. We completed the bridge back in around October last year, and because of the rain, we haven't been able to, to grade that area, but last week, like I mentioned before, the last week and a half or so, we have had good weather, so we've been able to go back, and you can see they've been, they've been working on, on the grading, on the project. That's a view of the, of the bridge looking in. The only thing left on the bridge to, to be done is the approach laps and the barrier wall, and will be completed. Here, this is McDonough Parkway also. If you see where the barrel is, that area, that area is a low point where the Box Colber is, and it was wet for about six months also, so finally, they were able to, to get it dry, compacted, place GAB. And now, we, we should be able to tie in the curb and gutter on both ends. Here's another view of McDonough Parkway that has been completed. GAB's been placed, curb and gutter in place. This is from Mica Drive going towards the Box Colber to the previous picture. State Route 20 at Airline, all the paving has been completed. Temporary striping is in place. You can see here, this is, this was a joint venture with Georgia DOT. Georgia DOT actually installed the poles, the signal equipment. Here, you can see them cutting the loops for the signal. That's Airline looking north. South Bethany at State Route 81, clearing is complete, grading is in progress, signal equip, signal poles are in place. We still have some utility issues out there relocating. We're working with, with the utility companies, one in particular to, to move out. That's South Bethany also. Kiss Ferry, 81, clearing is complete. This is also an ARAFAN project. Utilities are working right now to relocate, so we can start grading. This is Kim Mill at 42. We gave notice to proceed March 26. They have cleared everything, and we're going to start grading here pretty soon. All Conyers at Flat Rock, intersection improvement, grading is completed, I'm sorry, clearing is completed, grading is in progress, and we have started placing some GAB. All the pipe drainage structures are in place. East Atlanta Bridge, clearing is completed. As you can see, there's some poles in the way of our temporary bridge. Once those poles are out of the way, we can build the temporary bridge and, and move on. Foster Drive, we heard a lot about that one, but we finally opened it to traffic on March 18th. The only thing left over is for the grass to grow and do the punch lace, so pretty much completed. Collins Drive, clearing is completed, grading has started on that project. All the utilities except one is out of the way. Pulling Road, gave notice to proceed on March the 1st to start construction. Clearing is complete, grading has started, placing of, drainage structures are in place, and they actually started placing GAB on the project. That's another view. Simpson Mill, here we have utilities relocating water line at the north end of Simpson Mill. Clearing is completed, and grading is in progress right now. This is South Bethany. South Bethany, clearing is completed, grading is in progress. All the utilities are out of the way, and actually, we started placing some curb and gutter on the, on the bouton area street on Locust Grove. That's, anybody has any question? That's, anybody has any question?
Well, I have to say my hat's off to you and your staff. Those 15 major transportation projects, even the dirt road paving projects are major projects, and I know you guys have, you work tirelessly on this, and I just wanna commend you for the excellent job of getting these projects moving, and I'm, I'm really impressed, I'm sure the rest of the board is as well. Any questions or comments, Mr. Stamey?
Rocky, any particular reason why we left off Lake Down 81?
Sorry about that one. There's no picture on that one. But actually, we have completed the right way on that one, and that is also, that is a GDOT project that they are gonna let it out. So, Splos Park was to acquire the right way, and we have done that, and it was certified back in February, so.
When you anticipate?
They have a lead day of May, but it's gonna be up to them to let it, but that's, that's their lead day of May.
Mr. Bowman?
Rocky, on Eagles Landing Parkway, I noticed that, matter of fact, we had a little conversation about it the other day, they're putting the mats in, and it looks like on your test mat that they actually put a secondary mat in and went up again.
That's correct. We, we had that area by the pace creek that is pretty wet, and we had to place a second mat. The first mat kinda worked okay, there was one area that is still moving, there was still some moving show, movement shown, so we placed a second mat and put about an extra foot or two foot of dirt to make sure it gets tighter, so apparently, that's what is, is working. Georgia DOT recommends to use those, those mats, those fabrics, and hopefully, we're getting compaction, and we're also doing proof rolling, so we may have to add a third layer in areas that, that show more movement, but those are gonna be more close to the 42 end.
Well, it looks like they're moving along pretty, they're really moving along pretty quick with it, so.
They are, and, and just, just for, for everybody to know, there's gonna be a lot of night work in that area, also on Hudson Bridge, just because we don't want to impede traffic. I went by there Friday, and it took me forever to go from 42 to the, to the interstate, and I called one of my inspectors and asked him, you know, are we in the road, which, we're not supposed to, and he said, no, Rocky, that's just normal traffic on a Friday, just back to back, so if you hear anything, we're, you know, we're, contractor's not supposed to work during the daytime, shouldn't have a lane closure or pace traffic or nothing like that, so a lot of that work is gonna hap, happen at nighttime.
I'd, I'd gotten a number of calls on it, but it, and they're, the, after explaining, you know, exactly what we're trying to accomplish, they, they were fine, so, but I mean, it's, and it's gonna be hectic now, you know, we're, we're right in the middle of it now, so it's, it's gonna be hectic for a little while.
And it could be also people looking and, you know, slowing down to look at the construction on, on both sides of the road, that could also happen too, so.
That's probably a good thing, 'cause it gets pretty tight right there around the bridge.
It is, it is.
I'm not too sure what that geese is gonna do. He's, there's one that sits right there on the side of the roadway and eats every day when you go by. The cars don't interfere with him at all, but once it's widened, he's not gonna have a very big perch to, to be on, so. Mr. Stamey, you had another question?
Rocky, why I've got you. What do you think anticipation of getting completion of the East Lake Parkway?
I hope by June, June to be completed. We, we're gonna give them an additional 90 days due to the supplemental agreements and rain delays, so we're looking at June. They've been moving pretty good now with the good, good weather. They were gonna try to pave the intersection of 155 and East Lake, but they wanna concentrate in that area that is wet, that is drying, they wanna make sure it's dry, and we can put rock on all that, so we can go ahead and pave the, you know, entire road at one time, so hopefully by June, we can be completed, weather permitting, so.
And Airline in 20 is less than 30 days out, correct?
I would say less than two weeks. Once GDOT completes, we should be able to, and they've been working pretty hard at it, so we should be able to have it flash, and hopefully this week, and maybe the following week, we can have it operational, so within two weeks, I hope we can have it open.
Okay, thank you, Rocky.
Anybody else? Mr. Holden?
Rocky, one project was Race Track in 81. What's the status on that project?
We have, we have acquired about three parcels. There's about 18 or 19 on that project. It's, like I mentioned, it's a GDOT project. We acquired the right way. We, we have asked for an extension to acquire the right way for May of this year, so we should have completed all our right way by May, and then GDOT is gonna let it out.
Okay, so GDOT will do that entire project except for right away acquisition?
That's correct.
And will be the same on Lake Down 81 except for right away?
That's correct, yeah.
What level of participation did GDOT give in, in Airline in 20?
They, they provided all the signal equipment, the signal poles, the cabinet, the loops, so.
Dollar wise, though, what?
Dollar wise?
What level of participation, as far as total project cost, did they participate?
You're probably looking around close to 100,000.
And the total project cost is what?
Was 1.4. I got here.
Rocky, didn't, did you state? Do the design on Airline in 20?
That's, that's correct.
So, there's more than net there?
So, you can add another, another 50 or 60 to that 20. It was 1.1, 1,598,073.
So, the county spent roughly 1.4 million?
Roughly 1.6, 1.6.
Okay, 1.4 to the county, and, well, we've spent 1.6, but then they spent 200,000.
Thereabouts.
Okay.
About 12% participation.
Okay, I just, I just wondered, and, and also on, on Race Track in 81. Now, that one is one that's been around for some time, and is there a reason that, that we haven't acquired the right way, or what is the problem?
The reason for it, we had, we received plans that were not correct from GDOT, GDOT designed the plans, and the right way plans were not correct. There have been some, some parcels that have not been subdivided. They actually completed those right way plans back in 2006.
I knew they'd been on there for a long time.
So, by the time we, they did some changes on, on the design also, so not only they have, back in, last summer, they made some changes to the regional design they had, so that took them a long time to, to get that completed. Once we received the, the final right way plans, we noticed that there were some parcels on the corner that, that been subdivided since 2007 or 2008, so after they have completed their right way plans.
When do you anticipate this moving forward then?
I, I hope they can put it out. It, once we certify, it takes them three months basically to, to, to put it out for bid, so you're looking around August for them to bid it out.
Mr. Bowman?
Yeah, Rocky, is that particular intersection, is it north of McDonough by any chance? I'm trying to get.
North, northeast, more east than north, I think.
If you wanna be more specific about it, it is due east of McDonough, and this is one of the few times that GDOT has participated in any projects in, in this area of the county, and this is one reason I wanted some clarification on how much participation we had received from other, other projects throughout the county, especially in, correct me if I'm wrong, but is Flat Rock and Old Conyers, is that north of McDonough?
I'm certain that it is.
And is it a state route, or is that a county road?
County roads.
A county road, okay, and I believe that was federal monies that was held through GDOT.
If I can refer to the county historian, yes, sir, I would leave that picture.
I'm, it is certainly a, a point of question that I am.
I'd encourage you to ride up there and look at this intersection, it's coming along quite nicely, it's something to be proud of.
It should, and I'm proud for you. I'm just a, a little bit jealous that I don't get anything.
Well, thank you, Commissioner.
You won't ever hear me, you won't ever hear me complain about anything that we get in any part of the county, I'm just.
Just as long as we're generous. Understands that the districts one and two were kinda left out. In fact, if you recall when Ms. Lemon and Sam Welborn were here, I was grateful for the acknowledgement that we had for them on what had occurred, but if you will look at the projects that we were commending them for, not one was from McDonough to the southeast or west. So, that is why I happen to raise that question quite often, and you wonder why.
You don't want them to forget.
I don't want them to forget. I think they have already forgotten, to be quite honest with.
Any other questions or comments for Rocky? Thank you for the update. The photographs are, are very helpful when you bring those and, and do the presentation. It sort of gives our citizens a tremendous perspective of all the great transportation projects going on in the county, so thank you.
Especially those areas that I, I know, in the past, I have mentioned that we had areas that are being very wet, and we have been able to work for the last six months, and at least they can see that we've been working on it, and, and there's, now that, with good weather, we can definitely move forward and complete some of these needed projects.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The next item is under Public Works, and this is gonna be an update on county transportation projects, and our presenter is Mr. Terry McMichael, Public Works Division Director.
Make a request next time that I, I go before Rocky, since he's got all the money, and then I come up, this is, it's just not gonna be pretty. We have an update on Fairview Austin and Swan Lake. Currently, we're doing a finals on utility relocation. Soon as we complete that, we'll move on to our, getting our right way plats completed, and then, of course, start right away acquisition. Also, on that project, I think we are going to do a little bit of subsurface drilling for rock. Had a feeling we might wanna put a rock clause in that contract, so we're moving along on, on that project. In addition, we are going to do a reclamation project on Hearn Road. We discovered on, in our resurfacing, we have a LARP contract where Georgia DOT pays a portion of that resurfacing. We cost out what it would take to patch the road, and indeed, we found that it would actually be cost beneficial to go ahead and do a reclamation project on that road versus patching it. So, tomorrow morning, we'll be bringing a, the bids for that project and try to get that awarded, where we can get that project reclaimed, the base set up, then we'll put a two inches of 19 millimeter or binder on it, and then top it under the LARP contract, so we'll have that going on as far as on resurfacing. In addition to resurfacing, the state under Ara is going to do two reclamation and resurfacing projects that we put in for and, and were awarded their own. Airline, which should start, it's a full-depth reclamation and resurfacing on a section of Airline, I believe, from Kellytown to the Rockdale County Line. That should start on April the 19th, and then when they complete that one, they'll move to Thurman Road, and they will do Thurman from, well, just the entire road, so the whole road on Thurman. And again, it'll be a full-depth reclamation and, and resurfacing. Under resurfacing as well, we finished Noah's Ark last week, and currently on Miller's Mill, probably will complete Miller's Mill about midweek, and, and that's kind of one of the ones that I think's been around a while. We've patched it, and all of our citizens have seen it patched over the winter, but couldn't, couldn't top it until we got a reasonable period of about four days of warm weather. We've currently got that, and of course, we're now proceeding with that. In addition, we'll be completing our list of roads that we submitted for resurfacing, hopefully by the end of June, and then we'll start on our next year's resurfacing program, which I think we have already presented to GDOT and received our LARP contracts on it. Currently, as far as some additional smaller type projects, we finished a pipe replacement job at Acacia, and have, I believe we have paved it. On Farm Road, we have completed a, a major project there, a pipe replacement project that we had, to be real careful on, we had some wetlands or mitigation bank actually on one side of the road, so we had to get, get a lot of environmental input on that one. The pipes are laid, and we are now backfilling it. We have a grading crew that should be finishing up the public works site for Locust Grove today. Once they get completed with that, they will move on to the Fairview Road culvert replacement project, where we'll be, be replacing the culverts under Fairview Road right near the rec center, or Tim's Rec Center up there. In order to do that, particular pipe replacement, we're gonna have to build what I would call a runaround, rather than just close the road, dig the pipes out, there's gonna be a box culvert, go back in there. Rather than do that, we're gonna build a temporary runaround road where we can build it, move the traffic over, much like Rocky's gonna do the East Lake Bridge, we'll actually move the traffic over, then do the culvert replacement, backfill it, and then move the traffic back to the original alignment. So, that one will be started this week. Be happy to take any questions.
I tell you, I think it's fitting that you did your presentation after Rocky's, because it highlights the importance of the Splos program to the county, and the absence of that, you have a very limited budget each year, and without the Splos, there, there is no way in the world that Henry County could accomplish the transportation projects that are under construction. I mean, you, you do a lot with a little, so, you know, don't, don't feel bad that you don't have quite the dollars that he has. You, you do a lot with a little, and I know you assist him a lot too with those projects, and we're appreciative of that. Any born member with a question or comment? Mr. Bowman?
I've just got a couple of the issues that you and I talked about on Miller's Mill at 86.
86 Miller's Mill, yes, sir.
Yes, sir, do you have a chance to do anything with that yet?
Yes, sir, I think Tony, when they, when they resurfaced that, they tried to pull over it and smooth it up. He's supposed to get with that, he tried Friday to get with that gentleman and see if that was satisfactory. He's rode over it, and he tells me he can't fill a bump, but we're still gonna go back and meet with the citizen. And then on the holes on the opposite side of the road, we've gotta locate in, it should be valid now, so we should be able to do that work today.
On down Miller's Mill there, right before you get to Kitty Hawk, or actually Kitty Hawk Drive, the little subdivision there, on the, going down, I'm supposed to take a look at that tomorrow, but I understand that we may have opened something up that, I'll give you a call on it. I'm supposed to meet with a gentleman about a wash issue that's, that's started and, and is causing some silt to move down through here, so, but I'll, I'll find out more about that tomorrow, I'm meeting with him at 3 o'clock, so I'll give you a call on that one. And how long will it be before Miller's Mill is done and striped?
Striping, we generally wait about two or three days after it's paved before we stripe, because if you put striping down too quick, the asphalt and paint don't mix very well, so you have to let it cure a little bit. So, I would say we'll try to get the striping done next week, but they should be completed by Wednesday on the resurfacing.
By Wednesday of this week, they should be? That's, that's great, Miller's Mill was in some pretty foul shape there for a while.
It needed it.
But I appreciate it, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Moving on to finance, we're gonna get a budget update. Our presenter is Mike Bush, Finance Director.
Good morning.
Let's see here, we'll do revenues first. The, the current month's collection, this is a February report, and remember, and I think it was February 16th, we came and did a mid-year budget amendment for the current year that we're in, and that's why you see this negative $43,000 here, that's because we reduced the, the usage of fund balance, because we were actually a little bit better off than we had anticipated to be during that year. We only collected 5.2 million, you know, with a budget of 10.5, but as I said last time, the revenue's a crooked line, whereas the expense is more of a straight line, and we collected most of our money in November and December with taxes and things like that, and so as you can see, property taxes say $6 million, and we collected 1.3, that's because we collect, the majority of that budget is a 12-month budget versus, you know, where you collect it in two or three months. know, where you collect it in two or three months. So with collecting the 5.2 million dollars this month, we've collected $97,469,129 year-to-date. Our current budget is $126,517,598. That means unrealized, our revenues that haven't been collected yet for the remainder of the year are $29,48,469. We have collected 77 percent of our revenues to this point this year. If you compare that to last year, at this point, we had collected 72.2 percent. So we're a little bit, we've collected more taxes this year than we had last year. There was an article and I know that the county manager sent you an article saying that property taxes collections are, we're beginning to see some of that come back up a little bit. So that could be one of the reasons why we're a little bit ahead this year. Last year, at the same point in time, we had collected 96 million with a budget of 133 million. So again, we've collected more money this year than we had collected at this point last year and our budget's $7 million less. So that's a good sign. Then on expenditures, again, we had discussed that the expenditures, the average is out to where our budget's $10,585,593 and we spend anywhere from 9.4 to 10.3, depending if there's three paychecks in one month, it's a little higher. But we are, if you look to the year-to-date, we, on our, for a balanced budget, we should have, we could have spent $84,169,919. We've actually only spent $81,369,2. Again, our budget is $126,517,000. There's an unrealized or not spent to this point, $38,439,116. We have spent 64 percent of our budget at this point. Last year at this time, we had spent 66 percent because we'd spent roughly seven, let's see, yeah, $7 million more at this point last year than we have this year. So again, these numbers also were adjusted, so some of them may look different than they did last month because of the, last month, we brought the January report in. This is the February report, which has taken a mid-year adjustment on the budgets. So if anybody sees these numbers and needs clarification, by all means, call me and I'll clarify whatever I can clarify for you. So again, revenues and expenditures. Revenues, we're a little ahead. Expenditures, we're right on line. So we should be able to finish this year out and not have any unexpected problems that we foresee at this time. SPOS collections, I went back and looked, January was the first month I did this report and we were at 91.89 percent. The February report, we were up to 92.04 percent. And now with the March report, we're up to 92.29. So the SPOS dollars are beginning to trickle in a little bit more than they were in the past. So for the last three months, we've actually collected a little more than what was budgeted. Now, we will see in June, the budget will adjust another 1 percent or so. So those collections may level off again until we collect a little bit more. But at this point, we are at 92.29 percent. And remember, there was a month there where we got no money from the state. And I know that there was an $18 million set of money that the Attorney General said to the governor that you have to give that back to the local governments and we are still awaiting that check, so we haven't seen it. So we'll get something from, back from that, which should boost us up a percent or two. So again, we're pretty much where we feel that we're on target for our $180 million SPOS program and maybe even potentially a little more. So that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer any. I actually have the details of the budgets, but at this point, we just made an adjustment, so they're pretty much all clean. And I didn't, I haven't given you that one as of yet, but any questions?
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Bush, as far as the upcoming budget, the one that you're working on now, when will the commissioners have an opportunity to see that? And if there are questions by department or whatever, bring those questions up.
I do believe that we're going to try to meet with y'all tomorrow if possible. If not, set up a time to meet with you, a preliminary meeting to show you where we're currently at in this process of balancing this budget and maybe to get some guidance on how you want us to, you know, go forward. But I know we had talked about trying to do that today, but today is just so packed with meetings that, you know, we're going to try again maybe tomorrow after this board meeting in the morning, if it's not a long one. If not, then we'll get on your calendar, because we'll have to have all of you there at one time to make some decisions, because it's hard to do at three and three. So we will definitely be trying to do that this week.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. County Manager, any comments for public session?
Couple of things to, I guess, just flesh out Mr. Holder's question. As Mike said, we would like to adjourn from the regular meeting tomorrow into a budget workshop meeting in Conference Room B, where we could go over some of the items that, the preliminary items, the cuts that we've made in some of the budgets and some of the major potential ways that Mike and his budget staff who's in the audience and that we've looked at possible ways to save dollars and stretch our dollars. And I think that one of the key numbers that Mike just presented to you in the annual expenditure, year-to-date expenditures, you can see that we're about $3 million under our budgeted expenses. We realize that over the last three months of this fiscal year, we have the chance to continue to maintain that savings rate with some very strict and pretty severe controls over department spending this last three months. And that savings can help our fund balance and the use of our fund balance in coming years. So we are going to institute some things over the next week or two where I guess expenditure controls that will help us down the road. We're going to try to maintain that good savings rate that we're at right here. And a lot of times at the end of governmental budget years, that savings rate disappears. We're going to try to control that a little bit more this year. And I'd also like to say that you just heard presentations from four folks that you have given a lot of responsibility to for the financial operations of this county. And I just want to say that just in my little over three months with the county, I've gotten to know these folks as well as the rest of the management staff. And I couldn't be happier and y'all should be very proud of the folks who work for Henry County Government. They do a great job managing the resources that you give them to. They take a lot of pride and responsibility in their jobs. I've enjoyed working with them and I look forward to the coming years to face these challenges that we've got to address. You have a lot of good folks working in Henry County and I'm glad to be here. Just wanted to say that personally.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Mr. County Attorney, any comments?
No, ma'am.
Anyone sign up for public comment? The upcoming meetings and events, tomorrow, April 6th at 9:00 a.m., it's going to be a regular board meeting. Monday, April 19th at 9:00 a.m. and Tuesday, April 20th at 6:30 p.m., those are both regular board meetings. At this time, I need a motion to convene into executive session for the purposes of potential pending litigation, personnel matters and land acquisition. Motion by Mr. Bazler.
Second.
Second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. Second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Motion carries 4-0. At this time, I need a motion for approval of an affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Stamey.
Second.
Second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Motion carries 4-0. If there's no further business to come before this board, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bazler.
Second.
Second by Mr. Jeffries. All in favor? Motion carries 4-0. We stand adjourned.